I will call this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order December 18th at 5:30 PM. And will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no amendments to the agenda that I'm aware of unless somebody has one. Okay. We have no visitors scheduled. So now I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 27th.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Okay. Any alterations to the minutes?
I have a couple of comments. On the first page, under Visitors, second line from the bottom, the city will be the applicant. I would delete "so you are required to have" and replace it with "requiring" a public hearing. And then on the second page, Governor's Highway Safety Grant Program, third line from the bottom of that paragraph, Paul Felion will get, should be replaced with "complete" a one-year program with the city. Semi-colon, "he will receive," rather than "get," "training and certification." And then the list of counties, I would delete county after each, ending with Wyndham Counties, capitalized C. And that was it. Anybody else?
Elise Shanbaker's name is spelled with a C before the K. So in the first, Visitors, Director of Addison County Community Trust.
What is it? Oh.
So there, and then also in the Attendees.
Okay, sure.
Anything else?
Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries. And we move on to citizens' comments.
Nope.
Do we have a citizen out there? Do you want to make any?
That's actually Richard from R&amp;L.
Oh, okay. All right. Great. I have not met him before, so. All right. So we get on to business. And so here we are. R&amp;L itinerant vendor license? I just would make a comment a little bit before you say that. It's on the agenda because, well, it probably doesn't hurt to have one, but I'm not all that sure that we actually need to have one, given the circumstances under which his company is working with us. But thank you.
So I invited Richard. Richard is the owner of R&amp;L Rubbish and responded to our RFP to help us in our transition as Casella goes away on December 31st of this year. Richard is currently operating in several other communities and has both the capacity and the desire to assist the five communities that take part in the Virgin's recycling and trash drop-off down at Canal Street. I invited Richard here this evening just by way of introducing him to the council, and I'm sure he'd be willing to field any questions that anyone may have.
How many folks do you expect to have actually on the ground working, particularly on Saturday, in order to handle? Because the shuffle is going to be so different from what will be everybody's gotten used to.
Right. So I was telling Matt, what I plan to do, like the first Wednesday, or the last Wednesday of December and the last Saturday of December before we start, I plan on going over and handing out flyers and kind of talking to people, kind of let them know, because now as it stands, where the trash is collected is up on top by the sandpit, and we're going to do it trash and recycling are going to be side by side. And we're going to take it all. So people are going to have to drive down. And I was telling Matt, what I'll do is there's enough room before it's been kind of single-lane. What I'll do is put two lanes, starting with cones, so it'll take less, hopefully, less traffic off the main road and bring people up closer. The amount of people I'm going to have, I'll probably heavy it first to start with, just because it's a new learning curve for people. How many? I'm thinking maybe on a Saturday I may have six people to start with. Just because, like, for me to go introduce myself, kind of explain to people, let them know before they pull up that there's going to be a cost to them for the recycling. It's not going to be free if they're bringing just the recycling. And then on Wednesday, I may just, just because I'm going to have the first Wednesday after Christmas, so I may still be kind of busy. So I may have five to six people just for that reason, too. Because I've been over and I've kind of, you know, watched on Wednesday, and it looks like I can probably do it with four people pretty easy on a Wednesday. But just because it's new and after Christmas, I'll probably have five or six people. Yeah. And I've given my rates to Matt. He has my rates and will pass those out to people so they'll have an idea, so they're not completely, you know, blindsided. There's going to be some people that are going to have some issues. Ninety percent of people are still going to think that it's included in their taxes. People are going to be getting calls. I'm just going to pass the buck.
Yeah. We're expecting, particularly Matt and me, are expecting calls.
Yeah.
What does that say?
Yeah, people. So I try to, I'm going to try to break them in, you know, ahead of time. So that first day, it's not a complete madhouse for us before we're there.
So you're going to have to be making change. If I can understand this, you're going to, instead of having a row go into recycling and then up to garbage?
They're going to be side by side. So when a car pulls up to us, we're going to take both the trash and the recycling from.
At the same time and say it's $4 or whatever.
Yes. Yes. And let them know. And then they're going to pull up, and I'm going to have somebody up ahead, farther up out of the way a little bit. And I'll make sure that, it'll be up to me to communicate to make sure that this person is charged, you know, the $4. This one's $5 or, you know, whatever it is. That's how we'll be doing, how we'll be doing that. And it's all going to get modified, you know, whatever I have to do to make things a little smoother as time goes on. And I realize this time of year is not quite as busy compared to, I'm sure, when summertime comes, just probably because of the lake. I'm sure you have more, a few more people that want to show up and come. I'm not, you know, so.
With the recycling, with the rates on that, we talked about bundles.
Are you expecting recycling to be bagged or bundled or boxed somehow?
No.
Because I know a lot of people just have, they bring you their bin and you.
Yeah.
That's still fine? Okay.
Yeah, and that's fine. And I'll let people know that. I've been watching, I watch when they bring in now, a lot of people bringing bags and stuff. And I'm going to try to ask them, they can still bring in bags, but try to open them up, because we're going to probably take the time to slowly bring people in. Because I still know that a lot of people don't understand what's completely recyclable and what's not. So it's just thrown in the trash bags. They're just throwing it in the truck, and they're not really separating. So it's going to take a little time, but eventually everybody will be on the same page.
Okay.
So, yeah. But whoever people want to bring their stuff, we'll take it. We'll deal with it there.
Okay.
So in addition to Richard pressing the flesh over the next couple of weeks, we do have some informational rate-related signing that'll be going up tomorrow and Saturday. As people do queue up for recycling, informing them the prices. And Andy Kirkaldi is working on an article for the Addison Independent at this time as well. We'll probably see that on Friday as well, just, again, getting the rate information out. And also delineating the fact that it's now, you know, pay on foot versus being paid out of taxes.
Counsel, have any other questions? You have any comments? Any comments that you want to make?
Your technical support, your moral support.
Oh, okay.
There was one minor question that Don MacLeante from the transfer station had regarding some questions that they've been getting. And one of the questions that people have been calling about is who can come to the drop-off? So we collectively have known it to be the five towns, although I think I heard from Richard that even that didn't matter.
No, on my end, it doesn't. If whoever, whoever, because I'm not, whoever wants to come to me can't from whatever town, because they're not having to pay, there's no cost, you know, for them to come to me before, before they show up, you know? It's not out of the, it's not out of the taxes. Nothing's paid out of the taxes. So on my end, I won't refuse anybody.
We just wanted you to know that because if that word goes out, that's even potentially more traffic.
But it is, if we do get busier, I mean, I will definitely put more people to take care of. And I'm sure my first two couple of times, I mean, it's not going to be perfect. Hopefully, everybody's happy and, you know. And I will talk to people. A lot of times, I still have issues with my other drop-offs that when people leave, there's always, a dollar makes a big difference to a lot of people. A lot of people will get very upset for a difference in dollars. A lot of times, I have to pull aside and I have to explain to them why the cost is. And it's not going to be a complete science. I mean, I have luggage scales if somebody really wants to. But as you do it all the time, you kind of get an idea of the weight of what things cost, how heavy bags are and stuff. But it won't be a complete, some people say, well, geez, I was here last week and I paid $4. So come, it's $5 this week. Sometimes people are bored or two, and you get to know your customers. And sometimes what we do is, well, it should be a little bit more, but you're not quite. And then maybe next week I'll hit you for $5. You know, so it fluctuates a little bit. It's not a complete given science. But if people are really, if somebody's really upset about it or has an issue, I do have luggage scales that tell you how much things weigh, so we can work it that way. So.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. We'll move on. Thank you.
Richard, thank you very much. Appreciate it greatly.
If you have any questions, you can just call at any time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. 5B.
Thank you.
Thank you. 5B, appointment of downtown basin master plan task force, the basin task force, AKA. And so I do have two potential appointees. Jill Strube, who is the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club. She is, she was on the original list of people who participated when we had the community visit. And also Tim Cowan, who lives on the basin. And he was also on the original task force when we had the community visit. So we have two people that seem to be appropriate, have been involved from the beginning. So unless you have others or you object to those, then I would need a motion to appoint those two folks to the basin task force.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Good choice.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Okay. While we're in that subject area, Dave, being the council person on that task force, if you would convene the first meeting, understanding that you don't have to be chair, but they may make you chair, you know? It's up to them.
It's occupational hazard.
Remember that we're under the open meeting law.
Understood.
So things will have to be posted and minutes will have to be taken.
Understood. Will do.
And the only other suggestion that I have is that when they get started, if they could concentrate more on the downtown pedestrian-related safety and traffic stuff that's in.
Absolutely.
The master plan. Because we, the city needs to be putting forward as much unified opinions about what we think should be done when the paving work is done and seeing what we can have Vtrans do for us. So the more of our committees that are working on that and say the same thing is more chance that we can get it, and we have to do that relatively soon.
Will do.
5C, appointment of trustee of Bixby Board. And Matt, you want to make some comments on that?
A minor comment, I guess. So the council had decided previously to take no action. That allowed the members of the Bixby Board to suggest to us their designee. They have decided that that designee is Martha Mack. Paula Moore informed me of that yesterday morning. Aaron Roche also has joined the Bixby Board. And as I understand it, there's still some turnover going on that may allow for additional appointees to join that board at this time. So that's it.
Okay. So we don't have to take any action on that?
So will Martha come report back to us on a regular basis? How does that, how will that work going forward?
The appointees should be speaking with us, at least, you know, on an as-needed basis, if nothing less, David. But, you know, it would be great to get them on a regular rotation of, once a quarter, I think would be appropriate.
Got it.
Okay. Item 5D, appointment of Virgin's Board, to the Virgin's Board of Listers. And we have had no applicants for that position, so I'm not quite sure what we'll do. It might end up staying vacant until the elections, but hopefully, we can find somebody who wants to, who wants to do that job. So if you know of anybody who might be a likely victim, a person, then let me know.
Some extra time on his hands right now. Might know something else.
Gee, maybe if we ask him, maybe we'll do that, actually. 5E, resolution of appointment representative to the Addison County Economic Development Corporation. I just passed around a sheet because we need to actually sign that. Do we, I guess it's a resolution, so we have to pass this resolution. It's in your packet. So I need a motion to, for this resolution to appoint representative, who will be Jeff Fritz. He's currently on that board.
Seconded.
Who?
By and moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Jeff, any comments?
No. I'm actually nominated to begin my second term as Secretary of the Board, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6, City Manager's Report.
Good evening, everybody. Regarding the budget, I have to say that as we have fewer council meetings at this time of year, we have less budget activity because we ask you to sign and execute the warrants before they go in. So if you reviewed this budget report versus the last one, there's not a great deal of change. You know, the things that have always been watched or continuing to be watched. We had some, you know, early snow activity. And then December's been, you know, been okay to Jim Laro and the DPW team. So, and again, there's a police line item regarding premium pay overtime that we continue to work with Chief Merkel on. So not a lot of change there, but again, once the warrants are executed, you'll see some significant changes there for our next meeting. We need to warn of the Armory Lane Community Development Block grant for a public hearing on our next city council meeting, which is January 22nd. So I'm just putting that out there. We'll go through the warning process.
Our next one is the 22nd?
That's what I have on my calendar.
No, January, it should be two.
January 8th, something like that.
I'll double-check that.
We could put it on the 22nd.
They'll be here on the 22nd, but I need to be, they will be here on the 22nd. But I need to be prepared for the 8th.
Okay. So do you need any kind of a motion to say that we're going to have a public hearing then? Or you're just going to put it on the agenda?
I don't believe it's just a, just, we'll be on the agenda for 6 o'clock on the 22nd. Everyone received when you got here this evening a letter that I drafted to Richard Valentiati, who is the Air Pollution Control Division over in Waterbury. This is in regards to reactivating the stump dump down on Canal Street. The letter is the first step, but we have had a site visit with both environmental protection and air quality control out of Montpelier. And the process has changed significantly, where it is not nearly the, there's not nearly as much required to get this up and running as we had previously experienced. It really starts with the, with you guys authorizing me to sign and submit the letter. We give them some photos as to what the location is, and we can move forward very quickly after that. The issue that I face in trying to get the stump dump reactivated is that there is a rather significant mass of material down there at this time that either we need to decide that we are going to pick away at, so I say we, Jim Laro and his team and I, or we find an off-site location that can take it all over the course of a couple of truckloads. I'm not as excited about the transportation cost. So we may, over the course of the winter, weather-dependent, if approved by the council, work on chipping away at it so when we get into spring, we have capacity to be able to handle the need and then stay on top of it after that and going forward. So what I'm seeking is approval by the council to be able to submit this letter of intent.
The pile you're talking about is a collection of things? We can't just torch the whole thing at once because you have no idea what's in there?
We do not know. I don't have a comprehensive understanding of what's in there. I have some suspicions. And it is, it is a very large mass that they would see for miles if we ended up trying to torch it all at once. So I think it's probably prudent to try to chip away at it.
And that's there from just previous people that have been just dumping? Or it's just been there from when this was active previously?
I'm going to say it's a combination of both, David. We do have a locked gate now, and it's a secure site. But, you know, we were down there with the state, and, you know, someone had thrown a pallet over the fence, you know? So there's just, there's been a, it kind of fell off our scale of attention, and we're going to bring it back on-site.
Every one thing does go in there, though, and that's the Christmas trees that the lions pick up.
Merry mulch, yes.
Yeah. And that ends up being mulched, that people can actually take that out.
No questions? Thank you.
Do you need formal approval from us, or?
I guess I would prefer to have, as this letter does come from the council, Mark, I would like, I would appreciate approval to do so, yes.
I'll make the motion to approve it and then.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all. Also included in your packet this week was a letter that I drafted to merchants and other concerned parties, particularly downtown, requesting that as we are in our, one of our busier seasons, that we be mindful of the fact that we do have a two-hour parking ordinance. That letter going out generated conversation back to the office that many of our merchants and some residents downtown don't feel that two hours is long enough. So if you were to bring your kids to the Bixby for storytime and then pop over to Virgin's Laundry for a hot chocolate and then wanted to pop up to Linda's for some quick shopping, it really can't be done in that short a period of time. So the request has been for the council to consider increasing the hours to three hours. The other observation that was made that was, was that at some point we had signing located on our telephone poles downtown, particularly on the north side of 22A, north side of Main Street, that indicated that we did have a parking ordinance, and a request has been made that we, if we don't have those, that we reinvest in getting signing out, advising everybody. It's just the smart thing to do in a busy downtown corridor.
So unless the council has any objection, you'd be bringing to us a ordinance amendment?
Revised ordinance, yes. Recommending three hour, that the ordinance be changed to three hours maximum.
Next meeting, probably?
Easily done.
Because it, I think for an ordinance amendment, it has to be around for 60 days, appeal period? So it'll be a while before it actually goes into effect. Is that how it works? 60 days?
It has to be adopted, and then there's a wait period before it's effective.
Next item.
Okay. Thank you all. Item E is just strictly an FYI to the council that I've accepted the resignation of our Administrative Assistant, Greg Burdick. Greg has been offered a, an opportunity that, well, they made him an offer he couldn't refuse. We'll leave it at that. The job has been posted on indeed.com, which is the job hiring website that I'm most familiar with. And we have started to get some applicant flow. Greg is committed to stay with us through mid-January. And I'll be striving for some level of overlap before he departs. The new year provides a significant set of challenges to Joan and Melissa. So we're going to be doing as much as we can do to ease this transition during, as I said, a busy period of time at City Hall. So that's just an FYI.
Good. All right. Anything else?
That's all I have for you folks.
Okay. Mayor's Report, only a couple of things. I'm not sure that all of you are aware that there is an organization called the Vermont Mayors Coalition. And it's a grouping of the only mayors that are in Vermont, and there's only eight of us. And the, but the coalition tries to meet, particularly this time of year, we do meet periodically through the year, but this time of year to put together our legislative agenda, things that the mayors support or want to see the legislature consider just before the legislature goes into session. So we have been meeting, we met last Friday in Montpelier. We met with the Secretary of Human Services, Deputy Secretary of ANR. The one with the Deputy Secretary of ANR was to go over a proposal that the governor is going to put forward to the legislature to modernize Act 250. And that's the term that they use, but it's kind of a, a little bit of a reform to Act 250. And it's really causing, calling for more local control over Act 250 in those communities that have the capability, that have zoning ordinances and stuff like that. Instead of going it to the commission, a lot of those things would be taken care of locally. And it looks, it actually looks really good to have that change. Not only, I think it would make the process a lot quicker for those who want to have something done than to go through the Act 250 commission. There's a number of changes in there that the governor is proposing, but they look pretty good. So that's one of the things that we're, we're looking at. We also met with the Attorney General on something that he wants the mayors to support. And it's related to going after, you may not be aware, actually, that the state of Vermont is going after the drug companies because of their fraudulent claims on opiates and so on as to being not habit-forming and so on. And Vermont is one of, a number of states across the country that are joining in a suit against those companies. And we don't know how long. And we don't know how long or how much money, but ultimately, there probably will be some sort of money going back to the states for that. It's very similar to the cigarette companies type of thing. And so there is a proposal that the Attorney General wants that would benefit local communities because we're the ones that take the brunt of really the opiate problem. And I can't say much detail on it right now because there's not a lot of detail and some of it is still in legal stuff because this is all legal transactions that are taking place. But when I can say more about it, I will. But let's say that the Attorney General is trying to work to get, get us a share of that money. Because I don't know if you realize it, but when, when the Attorney General gets money from some sort of a settlement, it automatically goes to the general fund, which means the legislature can use the money any way they want. And the Attorney General would rather not see the money that comes in that fashion going that way. That maybe there should be a separate fund for that money and it can be used maybe to help communities or whatever. So that's what, that's what he's working on and that's what we're working on with him on. So I just gave you a little briefing about what the mayors do. And when we come out with our legislative agenda, I'll send you all a copy so you know what, what it is that we're working on. And with that, all I can say is Merry Christmas, have a great holiday, Happy New Year, and I'll see you next year.
And I'll make the motion to adjourn.
The motion.
I'd like to just ask one very simple question.
Yep, okay.
How much did the blinking pedestrians on each? Yeah, do you know how much they were each?
About $15,000.
For one side?
No, the whole set.
$5,000 each. It's about $5,000 a set.
Okay.
And then this installation, so it runs around 15, isn't it? 12, 15, something like that.
Okay, so just, just to have it on the radar for the budget. I've had several people request that those blinking signs be put up near the hired hand. And the reason for that is, is because it's an intersection which is difficult to see because of the way the cars are parked. So I think maybe that might be something we should think about, at least acknowledge that people are asking.
Yeah, the, what I would say about that is we're kind of an anomaly to be able to have gotten that many of them. In order to get them, it's more than having the money. And of course, we got a grant that paid half of the cost. But the, there, there's a set of criteria that you have to meet. V-Trans has to approve the sighting of those. And, and one of the criteria is, is the, the volume of people who cross and how much traffic there is on that thoroughfare. And actually, the New Haven Road one barely made. The, I think the only thing that convinced them is because it's so much of the crossing is children. That because the, the traffic volume and the sheer volume actually does not meet the criteria, but they, they allowed it anyhow. So we may, we may find, because there are several other places, people have come to me where they thought there should be one, and I, and I actually agreed with them. But I don't know whether we would qualify to even have one, even if we have the money. But we can try, you know, for it.
I'll make a note towards next year's budget, Lynn, and we can certainly engage V-Trans to see it. That's something that they would consider allowing us to do. Absolutely.
It's just a blind corner, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, and actually, actually, that's a good thing that you mentioned it because in the paving for Main Street, they will be repaving Green Street all the way down to New Haven Road. And they're going to grind it up, just like Main Street, and repave it. So we may be able to get some sort of dispensation on that as, as part of that project. This is a good time to bring that up.
Good.
Okay, well. We have a motion to adjourn and it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Happy holidays.